Pursuant to section eighty-four, fourteen, eleven of the Nebraska statutes, notice this meeting was given May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. The meeting will convene at six P M. and visitors may obtain a request to be heard for it from staff for any presentations they may have for the meeting. In accordance with policy, the request to be heard for it must be submitted to the secretary within the first five minutes of the board meeting in order to be heard at this meeting. Agenda items are subject to reordering the discretion of the board president. Please attend the entire meeting to ensure you're able to carry a discussion. Please be seated. Thank you. Dr. McFarland, sorry, skipped, Vice President Smith, the mission, please.
The vision, every student, every day, prepare for success, and the mission, to prepare all students for success in college career and life.
Thank you, Dr. McFarland, roll call, please.
Cassidy. Erdenberger.
Present.
Full. Head.
Present.
Holman.
Present.
Juarez.
Present.
Cracky.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Tealyn. Six, present.
Thank you, and Mr. Tealyn, Ms. Cassidy, and Ms. Full all informed me that they would not be present tonight before the meeting. Do we have any motions to excuse all of their absences or individual absences? We have a motion to approve all three by Ms. Erdenberger. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Holman. Any discussion? Seeing none, Dr. McFarland, please call the roll.
Juarez.
Aye.
Cracky.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Erdenberger.
Aye.
Head.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Six, aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on, there is no school spotlight tonight, so we have Board and Superintendent Communications Treasurers report, Mr. Ryan.
Good evening, President Head, Vice President Smith, members of the Board, Interim Superintendent Mr. Ray. The monthly financial report for the period ended April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four has been prepared and submitted for your review. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no interim superintendent remarks this evening. Moving on, Board comments, Ms. Cracky.
In looking at the agenda, I'm going into the consent items, and one of the items there, I thought the public would like to know the answer to it. It was to approve purchase ten thousand one hundred iPad Air nine generation tablets with Wi-Fi for preschool students' devices and K twelve general use card devices for three million three hundred seventy-one thousand six hundred eighty-five dollars. And I asked questions about this today, and one was, please describe how iPads are used in pre-K. These are to be used as an instructional tool in support of transition for our young learners. They will also be able to use them for language and literacy development by listening to stories and using specific apps that could be downloaded to the iPads, which will also be available for remote learning days. Screen time will be closely monitored and selectively used. How will it be paid for? I looked at the red channel and it says Sers in general fund. These are paid for through Sers and the warranty is paid for from technology, security, deposit funds, which is in general fund. Will the iPads go home with the preschoolers? If so, who will pay for damages? They will be sent home as needed and for remote days. If so, who will pay for damages? They will be treated like all district iPads. Families can purchase optional device insurance. And I know with our others that parents should pay for that because it's a lot less expensive than if the child loses the computer or something else happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cracky. Ms. Juarez.
Thank you, President Head. So I just wanted to say briefly that I did bump into a couple teachers this weekend who are on summer break and are so joyful that that time has arrived. I hope everyone has a wonderful and safe summer. And thank you to the teachers who are teaching at our next level learning. Your service also is appreciated, but I still hope that you have a good time this summer, too. Make sure to allow for some fun. And I did want to encourage everyone, teachers and staff, to please try to reach out and encourage candidates to apply for our teaching positions that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Juarez. Mr. Smith.
Thank you. I'll be brief. I just wanted to say congratulations to all the seniors and the wonderful graduations that we were able to celebrate and participate in. I know there's been a lot of graduation parties and things like that, but just wanted to say thank you to the teachers and educators and then congratulations to our seniors and good luck to our next level learning students.
Thank you. Any other board members have comment tonight before we move on? All right, seeing none. Next item on the agenda is public comment. We have three speakers who have submitted requests to be heard forms. The Board has adopted policy eighty-three forty-six, which provides public comment for a period of one hour. That same policy limits individual speakers to a maximum of five minutes. We ask that you respect that time limit. Dr. McFarland will let you know when you have one minute remaining and when you have thirty seconds remaining. If you're in need of interpreter, please let Dr. McFarland know and one will be provided for you. We understand that people have strong feelings about the issues they come to speak about. We ask that you respect the opinions of all who speak and refrain from applause or other outbursts during presentations. If the subject of your public comment is related to a particular student or staff member, we ask that you not identify the student or staff member and instead provide that information to Dr. McFarland. She will assist us in looking into those specifics for you. If you do not get an opportunity to speak and would like to submit any written commentary, please provide it to Dr. McFarland. She will make sure each member of the Board gets a copy. As a reminder, Nebraska revised statute eighty-four, fourteen, twelve requires that any member of the public desiring to address the Board provide their first and last name, including an address and name of any organization you may represent unless the requirement is waived for security reasons, and we have no request for waiver this evening. So again, please state and spell your first and last name, state your current address, and let us know if you are here representing any particular organization. In addition, we ask that you remain seated until called to the podium. Please remain at the podium and do not approach the board table. If you have materials to distribute, please let Dr. McFarland know and she will come get them from you. It is now six-ten P M. and our first speaker is Josh Cahill.
My son was sexually assaulted three times in the bathrooms of Norris Middle School over his three years in attendance, but this is likely not what OPS has recorded.
Yep, I apologize, sir, real quick. Could you state and spell your first and last name and address?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Josh Cahill, three-two-zero-five, Hanscom Boulevard, Omaha, Nebraska, six-eight-one-zero-five. My son was sexually assaulted three times in the bathrooms of Norris Middle School over his three years, but this is likely not what OPS has recorded. Legally speaking, sexual assault can take many forms. For these occurrences I'm talking about, it is about taking nude pictures during a moment with a reasonable expectation to privacy. The reason why this is not what OPS has recorded is because on each and every occurrence, the perpetrator or their family were allowed or requested by Norris admin to delete the pictures. On each occurrence, I request that the phone and pictures are to be turned over to the police investigations and admonish Norris administration on each occurrence due to its part in the lack of evidence. Nebraska revised statute, chapter twenty-eight, section nine-twenty-two. Tampering with physical evidence penalty. Physical evidence defined. Item one, a person commits the offense of tampering with physical evidence if, believing that an official proceeding is pending or about to be instituted and acting without legal right or authority, he or she A destroys, mutilates, conceals, removes, or alters physical evidence with the intent to impair its verity or availability in the pending or prospective official proceedings. B knowingly makes, presents, or offers any false physical evidence with intent that it be introduced in the pending or prospective official proceedings. Two, physical evidence as used in this section shall mean any article, object, document, record, or other thing of physical substance. Item three and on are about felony misdemeanor communications between lawyers and judges. Annotations on it. To conceal or remove physical evidence within the meaning of subdivision one A of this section is to act in a way that will prevent it from being disclosed or recognized. The observed OPS policy appears to move it along with as little legal intervention as possible, anything to stay out of the news. If it happened to my son multiple times, it begs the question, how many other students is this affecting and never came forward? Norris administrators handled each of these occurrences identically. I can only conclude that this is intentional on the part of OPS administration. I am just unable to comprehend how our children can be repeatedly violated in the bathrooms unless there are those who could possibly benefit. Nebraska revised statute, chapter fifty-five, section four-fifty. Accessory after the fact, defined. Any person subject to this code who, knowing that an offense punishable by this code has been committed, receives, comforts, or assists the offender in order to hinder or prevent his apprehension, trial, or punishment, shall be punished as a court martial may direct. To be clear, I do not believe education administrators should become de facto lawyers and police, far from it. I am asking that OPS leave the evidence with the police and let the lawyers and victims' families decide from there. I urge you to do so much sooner than later because a parent might be able to find a lawyer who is not overburdened by caseload. I would not be standing in front of you if it were not for my son. I've been working with my son for a number of years to improve his self-confidence and self-advisy, though these occurrences have definitely been a stumbling block. Teaching advocacy and confidence is not easy, but with my son's enthusiastic response to help make things better, I stand before you tonight. I implore you, Board members all, to tell my son, or even special children in your lives, how many pictures may be taken of them in the bathroom before it merits an appropriate response. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Michelle Rogers.
I just want to say hello to Superintendent Ray, President Head, and the members of the Board. My name is, oh, I'm so sorry. Michelle Rogers, M.I.C.H.E.L.L.E.R.O.D.G.E.R.S. And I'm at ninety-five forty-seventh Sprock Street, Omaha, Nebraska, six-eight-one-three-four. I'm so very sorry. First, I just want to say thank you to all of you. I know that your jobs are not easy, so I just want to say thank you for all of the sacrifices that you guys make on a daily basis for these students. But one thing I am going to talk about, and what grieves my heart, is to see that there are still certain books that are available in the library that are not, that should not be in there. According to justice.gov, federal law strictly prohibits the distribution of obscene matter to minors. Any transfer or attempt to transfer such material to a minor under the age of sixteen, including over the internet, is punishable under federal law. Obscenity is not protected under First Amendment rights to free speech, and violations of federal obscenity laws are criminal offenses. And so according to the constitution dot congress dot G O V, the United States Supreme Court definition of obscenity as obscene material is material which deals with sex in a manner appealing to interest. And it is defined by the Supreme Court of the United States according to constitution dot congress dot G O V. It states material having tendency to excite lustful thoughts, a shameful or morbid interest in nudity, sex, or excretion. So before I go on, I just advise any and all minors watching this to leave the room or turn the channel while I read this due to the explicit content. So I do plan on reading extremely slow and show some of these items as well. So the book that I'm reading is called It's Perfectly Normal. It is located in the Buena Vista High School, and I just, I checked online and it is still there. So on page twenty-five, it says, when the penis is touched and rubbed, the penis and the whole body can feel good both outside and inside. Kind of tingly, kind of warm, and nice. It feels sexy. Page forty-one, erections can happen with what the penis is touched and rubbed, or when a boy or a man is having a pleasurable thoughts or seeing someone who makes them feel happy, excited, sexy, or nervous. The erections can also happen when watching a movie or TV show or video or reading or seeing something online that feels exciting. When someone attractive walks by or even having a pleasurable dream. Many boys and men often have erections when they wake up, and they usually happen before and during sexual intercourse. Let's see here, and there are several other pages that go into actually a lot more detail, and there's a lot of pictures that show every single act that they're actually talking about here, too. So again, this is available in the library. And page fifty-one, it goes on to say, under perfectly normal, masturbation, kids, teenagers, and grownups too experience sexy feelings when they masturbate. And masturbation is touching or rubbing any of your body's sex organs for pleasure because it feels good. One everyday term people, young and old, often use for masturbating is playing with yourself.
One minute.
Some people believe that masturbation is wrong or harmful, and some religions call masturbation a sin. But masturbation cannot hurt, cannot hurt you. Page sixty, sexual intercourse usually begins with two people touching, caressing, kissing, and hugging each other. And so it does go on, but I will say that, you know, just one thing to keep in mind is if you guys have children in school.
Thirty seconds.
Then you might just kind of want to think, would you want your child to come home and start telling you about all these things that they learned from a book in high school or even in like middle school and where they should not be reading about this at all. So you might just kind of want to question yourselves to see if this is something that you'd want your child to come home to you about and talk about. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker this evening is Michaela Kazir.
Good evening. My name is Michaela Kazir, M.I.C.H.A.E.L.A.K.A.Z.
Good evening. My name is Michaela Kazor, M.I.C.H.A.E.L.A.K.A.Z.O.R. And I live at 11619 Grand Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, 68164. Good, good evening Superintendent Ray and members of the board. First and foremost, I want to thank each of you for your countless hours devoted to help the next generation succeed. It doesn't go unnoticed. My name is Michaela Kazor, and I am here today to speak on a certain library book that I discovered is at various high schools in OPS. The book is called Identical, and it begins on page 210, or there's many other parts before this. But on page 210, it says, "Drinking, smoking, feeling the creep of the poppy along my spine. Skull to tailbone, I know the highs most hash. Not so different from regular cannabis, though even tastier. But the opium topper provides a whole new set of rushes. Body rushes like little shivers, head rushes like turning in circles, round and round, don't fall down. Shall we move the party to the bedroom? Ty reaches over, kisses me, hard, harder. My, his teeth rake my bottom lip. Moving, moved down over my chin, down my neck, not too hard, not really, but hard enough. Should I have, should I have worn garlic and silver cross? I laugh out loud at the thought, and I realized how effed up I am, but they actually say the word. He picks me up, carries me into his bedroom, and half throws me onto the bed. When he starts to undress me, I burst into a new fitted giggles. My jeans are so tight, he can't wiggle me out of them. Want some help, my macho vampire? I said everything and he does too. But before we do another thing, he asks, how about another bowl? Something to take you real, real low. He leers like a scary circus clown, low as a girl can go. True to his word, he drops me real, real low. I'm floating on the poppy seed, naked, mellow. But a sudden wind rouses the brakes and low tide builds to major swells. Ty kisses me, all thing pure vampire. Hey, take it easy. But somehow my body responds to the pain, and Ty responds to that, clamping one hand around both my wrists, pulling them over my head and pinning me helpless. It is then I noticed nylon cord, one tied tight to the headboard. Ty's voice is almost a snarl. This is one of his favorite games. He wraps the rope around my wrist, knots it tightly, escape-proof. I shake my head, don't, but he does. Should I scream? Would anyone hear? Would anyone care? The obvious answer softens my plea, please. Haven't you played this game before? I guess I'll have to teach you the rules. The proper response would be, please sir, say it. My heart yells, no effing way. But my brain, the part that understands my daddy, makes me acquiesce. Please sir. He flips me onto my belly, yanks my legs apart. I don't have to see the restraints to know they're there. The ankle knots do not surprise me. I am helpless to know they're there. I'm helpless, exposed, and strangely somehow I feel at home this way. Say it, he demands, like I should know he means, please sir, punish me. Deliberately controlled, he punishes me. I whisper into the pillow, I understand. I understand why Kaylee liked the feel of slicing, likes to feel a slicing her flesh, releasing a bottled up hurt. Leather snaps against my skin and I remain like a stagnant water, afraid I might not play by his rules. This is his game, and the sick thing is I see quickly that I like it, might ask to play it again. The pain is fuzzy at the edges, blurring toward pleasure. Maybe it's the hash, the gentle arm of opium. And now new leather human, Ty falls softly over the heated welts, a soothing balm of sweet beaded skin. And then hidden pain forced inside of me, stuffed inside of me. Seared branded like marked, a moan escapes me and Ty surges. After knots loosened, a rub of cool, I don't know what that is, oil, persuades me to do, persuades me that I do want to play it again soon. And then it goes on with a bunch of other parts. It's probably like a fourth of the book when I was going through it. It's a lot of sexual content and it just,
Thirty seconds.
disgusting, and I'm praying that you guys see that it is gross. And it's not, I'm not here to put you guys on blast, but this is available to minors and it shouldn't be. Thank you.
Moving on to the consent agenda. At this time, any board member may request that any item on the consent agenda be removed from the consent agenda and be considered and voted on separately. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is before us.
Moved by Dr. Erdnberger.
Do we need a second? I'll second.
Second by Ms. Juarez.
At this point, any member of the board may request to abstain from any item on the consent agenda. Do we have any abstentions? And thank you, Mr. Smith, by the way. All right, seeing no abstentions, do we have any comment before we take a vote on the consent agenda? Seeing none, Dr. McFarland, please call the roll.
Crackkey. Smith.
Aye.
Erdnberger.
Aye.
Head.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
Sixi.
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on, we have information item, I-1A. In Mr. Tealyn's absence, he asked me to cover it for him this evening. So it is the first reading of five separate policies. Policy 2120 is the line of authority. It's just a technical cleanup to the line of authority should the superintendent be absent. Policy 4040 is a technical cleanup to our district social media policy, mainly covering how district social media should be utilized. Part of it is reacting to a recent circuit court decision regarding blocking certain individuals on social media. Policy 4045 is a new policy. We split out the expense reimbursement policy into two separate policies. This one specifically covers expense reimbursements for staff. When staff is qualified or able to be reimbursed, what they're able to be reimbursed for and the per diem rate that they'll be reimbursed at. Policy 8130 is the annual organizational meeting. It's just technical cleanup as far as the organizational meeting of the board. So it's that first meeting of January every year where we elect board leadership. And then policy 8231 is the accompanying expense reimbursement policy. That one specifically covers board members. Because of some statutory language, we felt that it was best to have a separate policy for staff and the one for the board. Board members can only be reimbursed for actual expenditures, not, not a per diem. So that is how that policy is written. Are there any questions? All right, seeing none. Moving on, we have one receipt report this evening. Item J1 is the Head Start Monthly Board Report for April 2024. Moving to closed session, Mr. Smith.
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public, interest, and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the interim superintendent, secretary to the board, Charles Wakefield, and legal counsel, negotiations, pending litigation, and legal advice.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. We have a motion to go into closed session. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Holman. Any discussion? Seeing none, Dr. McFarland, please call the roll.
Erdnberger.
Aye.
Head.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
Crackkey.
Smith. Aye.
Sixi.
Motion carries. Thank you. Let me remind the board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest and the protection of needless injury for the reputation of individuals to discuss with the interim superintendent, secretary of the board, Charles Wakefield, and legal counsel, negotiations, pending litigation, and legal advice. Let the record reflect, the board went into closed session at 6:2935 PM. Let the record reflect, the board went into closed session at six twenty-nine thirty-five P M.